To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
We've got to add, we've got to add to the agenda, guys. I don't know where we want to put this, but it's just to give Mike the authorization to sign the South Street sidewalk project, a small-scale bike and pedestrian agreement. That's got to be added to the agenda.
Let's just do it right after we approve the minutes.
Okay, okay.
Get it over with.
All right.
We also need to add, and we can do that right after the grant, in fact, grant approval, is we have to authorize a payment of the purchase of the Chevy 6500 that we approved the order back in January 8th, and now that's at the...
Okay.
So, we can, you know, they want a payment so they can proceed and send it to, what's it, Viking, I believe it is? Yeah, send it to Viking, get it done, so we can have it before winter.
Do you have the paperwork on that, Dick? Because I don't know if I do.
I don't have anything in my packet.
So, I'll make the motion and put the number in there.
Okay, that's all we need.
After that, we can do that after that grant, the South Street grant approval.
Okay.
The other thing, I think, will take off, the tax rate discussion. We are not prepared to go forward with that as far as I am, hope. Do you agree with that, Karen?
That is very possible. Yes.
Then we're going to take that off the agenda. That will be done at the next agenda. When discussing that with Mike yesterday, he felt that that would be still adequate time to create the tax bills without having to send out any revisions.
Okay.
What about the UDR discussion for adoption? I don't see anybody here from the Planning Commission, and I didn't get, I didn't receive anything, updated changes or an updated one from the last meeting.
The last meeting was the final version, which the Planning Commission elected not to change. So, we can accept it and approve it as it stands, or we can make changes that we feel are appropriate.
I am...
Mr. Brett, prepared to make a motion when we get to that, and we can discuss at that point.
Okay.
I don't feel that should be removed from the agenda.
Okay.
And that's the only thing I see that we need to change at this point.
So, we're going to remove the tax rate discussion, Dick? Is that what you said?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay.
What about the townwide reappraisal discussion? I don't see Tyler Technologies or the Town Assessor here.
If they are not present when that comes up, I would suggest we table that until the next meeting.
Okay.
We do, however, have to authorize me to sign the statute 401A reappraisal order.
Yep. I have that right here. Yep. I got that here, Dick. We can do that after...
So, Karen, I won't be able to sign that on Friday.
Perfect.
So, we'll do that after we do this. Right, so, um, go ahead, Dick.
So, I guess I'll make a motion and we approve the agenda as Monday.
I'll second that.
You got a second, Dick? So, just call the question?
Go ahead.
Yep. I'll just call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I vote aye.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of June 24th, 2024?
Uh, make a motion to approve the minutes of June 24th, 2024.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
I have several changes.
Okay, go ahead, Mary Lee.
Okay, on the first page, our citizens' comments, uh, the second sentence, it appears the BB board did not, instead of just board, it's BB board. Um, on the next page, second paragraph, uh, when Charlie Brown was talking, they have, uh, they have a right, right away across them property instead of their property. Now, you go down to where Mary McIntyre stated, and one, two, three lines down, Mary McIntyre reviews some discussion she had with vendors, not just had. Now, next, down to the next one about Carol Lester, the first sentence, chicken, goats, and dogs, that should be put in there, that are becoming a problem. Under the police update, uh, we'll continue to address that, comma, he cannot get in touch with him either. Don't you just love me? Um, page three, uh, we're talking about the Rutland Regional Planning. M. Jones briefly explained this is the first step in the process and stated these fees, I'm changing the thing, these fees are for planning for the stormwater. It didn't make sense the way it was written before. Um, now you're down to Mr. Kearns. You talked about Champlain Southern Basin, basin needs to be capitalized. On page four, uh, let's see, we're talking about accepting the town highway, um, for the amount of 184,000, which can only be, we've got to take the word is out of there, which can only be used, not which is can only. And, and then the next sentence says, when they pay, who? When we pay, or when, who pays, is what I'm asking there. Um, down into the last, um, let's see, under the resolution, down, down under the underlying, underlying, it says, Mike Jones explained the extension mostly due to scheduling conflicts, instead of of, it'd be with contractors. Um, then it was stated, it's included 70,975, cross out is for the current year, and 11,200 is extended, has already been encumbered once. I'm not sure what that even means. That didn't make sense to me.
Dick, can you hear, can you hear these corrections?
Yes, and that one, spread that one back again, Mary Lee.
It's down at the, at the last couple of sentences, under the resolution. It said, for the current year, 2324, and 11,200 is extended, has already been encumbered once. What does that mean?
That means it was encumbered last year and are extending that encumbrance for another fiscal year. There were some things that we just could not get done in this past fiscal year.
Okay, I didn't quite understand what that meant.
That's what it means.
Okay. Um, on page five, second paragraph, it says, they will have a start date very soon. I think it should be Wilkes Paving will have a start date very soon on the paving of Blissville Road, rather saying they, who's they?
You can just change the word they to we, Mary Lee.
We'll have a start date, so Wilk will be telling us when we're going to start the paving.
Okay, we will then. All right.
Just change they to we. Yep, okay.
All right, now, uh, we're down to the truck, uh, delivery date from them. Who is them?
Where are you then, Mary Lee? Where is that?
Right here, right there.
Starts with new aerial truck at that line. Okay, I'll go again.
And it says, getting delivery date from them. Who is them?
I think that was the fire department that we bought the truck from.
But shouldn't it be stated who we're getting it from, not just them?
The municipality, yeah. I can't recall.
I don't remember it either.
Dick, do you know that? You, you don't have that?
Mike can tell you if you're here.
Okay, we'll just make, we'll just make a note and change that to who.
Um, now we're going to get down to the docks. M. Jones addressed a problem, docks and how it can be addressed. You should have a word with in there and make docks plural. Uh, but the owner of the docks is stating the town does not have jurisdiction. Who's the owner?
That's not correct, anyway. It wasn't the, the owner of the dock didn't say anything about the town not having jurisdiction. That was something that Mike looked into, just to see if we had jurisdiction over the water.
So, it's us that looked at?
Correct. Mike, Mike reached out to the DEC to see if we could even control what the people do with their docks over the water, and we cannot.
Okay. Uh, way to the bottom, next to the last paragraph, we're talking about Mike Jones. Again, he asked someone, who's the someone? And then the next line is they and they, and it should be we and we. I'm really a pain, aren't I? I'm sorry.
No, but you've got a couple of questions that need to be answered. Yeah?
Um, we were talking about logos on trucks and things, and just a question, how can we make people have logos, especially if they're not from Cauzleton? Then, the last paragraph, Robert Spalding Federated Church, should have it put in there after Federated Church. And I'm done.
Okay, go back up to, go back up that one right before that, Mary. What did you say about?
Well, we...
The other things, the delivery thing. What was your question on that one?
We discussed, well, actually, Mark brought up, things have changed so much with Amazon, UPS, uh, trucks mostly are well-identified, but some are not. There are subcontracts, and he feels they should look into an ordinance that would require subcontractors making deliveries have identification. And I'm just questioning, how can you make contractors, if they're not from around here, have a logo on their truck?
You can. A lot of towns do.
Really?
Yeah.
If I took up delivering whatever, I'd have to have a logo on my vehicle?
Not necessarily a logo, but your company name and phone number, so you're identifiable.
Point of order, this is not the time and place to be discussing that. This is just discussing the content in the minutes.
That's the, all I have.
Bring it up, bring it up later under select nicknames. Rob, do you have any?
I don't have anything. Mary Lee, I think, covered everything I had.
Mark, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
All those in favor approve the minutes?
Aye.
With the changes?
I vote aye.
Okay. I'll vote aye, too. Make a five, nothing. You get all those changes?
I think so.
If not, I'll give you this to...
Okay. Citizens' comments, items not on the agenda?
We're skipping stuff.
Oh, we, oh, we, we added the, we added this stuff, didn't we? Yeah, I'm sorry, guys. Can I get a motion to authorize Dick to sign the reappraisal order for the state of Vermont?
So, moved.
Second.
I think you're way too far.
That's actually on the agenda, Bob, uh, that we, after the townwide reappraisal discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, the South Street, small.
This is the one, this is the one I need right now, Mary Lee. I'll just let you do it. Can you do it?
Can I do it? What am I doing?
You're just authorizing Mike to sign this. I got it all highlighted there for you. We've already, we've already added it to the agenda. We just got to authorize Mike to sign it. It's right here, all written.
I make an emotion that we, we authorize Mike to sign the South Street sidewalk project. Small-scale bike and ped grant agreement.
I'll second it.
All those in favor of authorizing Mike to sign that agreement?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Passes.
Give that to her.
Yep. Okay. Is that the original? Okay, what else did we add?
Truck.
The truck. I don't have anything on that. Dick, you want to step?
I do. I'm prepared to make a motion, Bob.
Okay, go ahead.
I make a motion, we authorize the purchase and, or the payment of the purchase of the Chevy 6500, um, truck that, replacing the F-450 that was approved by the City Board on January 8th, 2024, for the sum of $68,023.64.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes, five, nothing. What else did we add to the agenda, guys? Remember? Help me out here.
I want that.
Just those two.
Just those two, because I got a bunch more stuff here, so, uh, okay. Recreation update?
Citizens' comments.
Oh, I skipped over it. I tried to do that before. All right, sorry, guys. Citizen comments, items not on the agenda? Come on up, Mary.
Okay, thank you. Mary Drogi, Pensamill Road. Uh, first of all, I would just like to say how terrific Saturday, uh, was for our Fourth of July celebration, from the parade to the after-party in front of the library to the fireworks. I was at all three of those. They all were terrific. I know a lot of people worked together, put a lot of hours in to make that really an amazing day. In spite of the rain, people came out and had a good time. I would like particularly to commend, um, the Friends of Cauzleton Parks and Rec, Lori Kamuta in particular, who put on an amazing, uh, Olympic obstacle, Olympic-themed obstacle course for the kids. It was extremely popular. Over 50 kids participated in that. They had a blast. It was really, really a terrific, terrific event. Um, so, onto my questions. Uh, I, uh, thank you for allowing the public to speak. Uh, I'm curious as to the updates on specifically the two grants that, uh, were applied to, for the village school, and I don't know without Mike, if you guys can answer that. One was, uh, a big one about heating and cooling and improving the building itself, and the other one, I think, was the smaller $30,000 grant that was about a feasibility study. Are there any updates on either of those? Nobody knows.
Dick, can you speak to that?
Uh, Mike, I'm 90% sure that we missed the vote on the feasibility study, that we didn't get the first, uh, go-round, and there was no second go-round, but I can't remember exactly what the details were. So, that at this point is off the table. We've got to figure out a way to pay for it ourselves, or, Mark, you were going to meet with some people at one point back in March or April about paring down that plan, and I think that it kind of fell by the wayside, so, um, at some point, when you got a chance to, to figure out what the status is, you could provide us with an update? Do you recall that, Mark?
I do, yeah, yeah. I had, uh, a meeting with the gentleman that, uh, had put together an initial feasibility study. It was very, very, very complete. Everything from, uh, improving signage inside the building, ventilation, right down to how to structure membership charges, uh, for citizens and other towns, but it was also, I forget, $150,000 study? It, it was not in our wheelhouse in any shape or form, and it was difficult to go back and say, can you pare this down to any particular figure, financial figure, because we didn't have any money to work with. So, I told him, John Hemelgard was the engineer, that if that came back around, I would contact him, but, um, I, I don't want him to go to a bunch of work that we're not prepared to pay for at this time.
Does that help you out at all, Mary?
Yeah, it was an update. Thank you. Um...
There is another grant that's in the works that, uh, could potentially cover windows, doors, uh...
Is that the MIRP?
Yes.
We just got that assessment back, Mark. The next step will be to proceed on towards the grant process, and I don't recall the chronology, but I think that happened sometime this fall, that we move forward with that to the next steps. Does that sound right?
It does. Yep, I think that that, that grant is very much a possibility.
Yeah, so the big gating item was getting that MIRP assessment done, which is now complete. I just saw the report in my mailbox when I picked up my stuff on Sunday. I have not had a chance to read it.
Okay, thank you. Um...
I can answer your question, Mary.
Yep, thank you. Um, and I know there's some things about the village school later in the agenda. I'm not sure if this is part of that, but, um, I was also wondering what your thinking is and/or process for taking CVS off the market.
This board will have to make that decision. We have actually closed on the property in Hubbard and is no longer a co-owner. We still have to pay to them, and that's part of the discussions we're going to have later in the day, or later in this meeting.
Right.
But it's part of taking it off the market. That's, we have a new board, so we should have that discussion, and we have not had it, and if we do have that discussion, it should be on the agenda as an item, which it is not tonight.
Okay. I wasn't asking for you to discuss it. I was just getting an update.
No, I'm just, you know, that's, that's where we're at. We're going to have to have that discussion, and we really do, we probably should have that discussion.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks, Mary.
Any other citizens' comments? Items not on the agenda? Anybody on Zoom with their hand up? No? I guess we can move on to the recreation update. Recreation Director, Mr. Alexander.
So, your folks got my written report? And I'm just wondering if that's something that you require that I read verbatim, or just, uh, can that be entered into the notes from my letter? And so, um, I guess I would open it up with questions from my letter. Um, most specifically, I'm looking to, um, draw the board's attention to the final paragraph in regards to the, um, the program MyRec and the specificity to, um, the needs of the recreation department. Uh, one of the things that I'm becoming more and more aware of as I go along, um, such as in the administration of, uh, the adventure camp program, which is a great deal of administration. There's a lot of paperwork. Um, this, the initial week, we had 18 campers, mostly because of the July 4th holiday falling within that week, and so I think folks were on vacation, and so they were reluctant to send their kids or sign their kids up for the first week. This week, we have maxed out at 60 campers, and it's just, you know, it's, um, it's difficult to utilize the HAGOV program in a manner that allows you to communicate adequately with parents to be able to take data off the HAGOV, out of the HAGOV program absent a very in-depth knowledge of Excel. It all relies on Excel reports, and that's pretty much the, if you're not up to speed on that, then you're pretty much not going to get much use out of HAGOV. Um, it has the basic information and whatnot, but in terms of the, the growth that we're hoping to be able to see through REC and the ability of the REC Director to spend less time, frankly, on the input of information and the, just the usability of it, to be able to go to HREC and say, for instance, and this is just an example of something that would be very useful, say you've got a softball game and you've got softball teams, and it's 3:30, and there's a thunderstorm coming in, and you want to communicate with all the parents associated with that team in an easy manner. You, through this new program, HAGOV, or MyRec, rather, it's all available on your phone, and everybody, you go into the program and you select girl softball, and all the parents and emergency contacts are available at the click of a button to be able to say, hey, you know, the game's canceled, reschedule for yada, yada, yada. Or, for instance, another thing that will give you an indication of how in-depth, um, the questionnaires and the sign-ups are for the MyRec program is, a, a family goes on, and they have three kids, and they go on one time to MyRec, and they're residents in the town, they sign up, you can ask them a volume of questions, everything all the way down to what is the size of the T-shirt for the uniform that your child needs, and everything in between, allergies, emergency contacts, emergency pickup people, anything that you can imagine. It's tailored for recreation. So, um, in this case, you know, you're, you're able to, at the click of a button, bring that information up, and it's not in Excel form. It's in usable, um, Word documents that, um, are easy to understand, easy to forward to people, to be able to have them understand, and not have to have, uh, a background in Excel documents as well. Um, there is a cost associated with it, and as I was sitting here, thinking about it, um, you know, I realized that because there is a cost associated with it greater than whatever the purchasing cutoff is, I, I realized that we probably would need to go through the three vendors to be able to secure, um, a, one particular vendor. Obviously, I'm on the fire department, too, and we have to do that routinely, and that was just something that occurred to me as I was sitting there. So, um, I do get regular emails from different vendors for this purpose, you know? They send you solicitations all the time. The interesting thing about MyRec is it was started, I think, like 10 years ago in Killington, Vermont, through Killington Recreation, and then from Killington, it went to Pittsburgh, and presently it's in 30 states. Um, however, during my field trip up to Pittsburgh, and Liz Alvarez, who's the recreation director up in Pittsburgh, she's the one that went through it briefly with me. In addition, you know, I've since had a, a, um, a go, a go-around with one of the sales pe, salespersons, Colin Drury, um, but she went through it very briefly with me, and she had an outstanding question that she needed IT support on. She needed to talk to somebody in person, and she picked up the phone and she dialed, and they picked up on the first or second ring. They're located right up in Colchester, and they pride themselves on their, um, IT support, and that's a big thing. Right now, with HAGOV, our IT support is basically all by email and/or video conference, because they're in Greece, Italy?
You're, you're, well, it doesn't matter. You're just contacting a Tannis, which is not the right person. So, um, there is a customer service center that you can contact, and I can give you that email.
Right. Well, suffice to say, my utilization of HAGOV, um, has not been, uh, very huge at the moment, and, um, I'm actually dealing with a situation right now with tennis camp that, um, was particularly aggravating in terms of HAGOV, and I still haven't had the opportunity to be able to express my displeasure with them on it. Um, I'm still dealing with the folks from the USTA Tennis on it, so, once I get through that, um, I'll deal with HAGOV on it. Suffice to say that over the, over the period of growth that we're going to hopefully, um, see with recreation and the recreation facility, and as well as activities up at the beach, because this program, um, interfaces all the way down to the concession stand level, so, this, through this program, you can sell a bottle of water... So, this, through this program, you can sell a bottle of water in your concession stand, and it goes through and interfaces with your financial folks and all that stuff. So, it's a, it's a very tailored program towards REC, hence the name, MyRec. And I'll be, I'll follow up with Mike on his return and see about securing bids for more vendors, comparable bids. I'm not sure why it didn't occur to me before when I started talking about it. Other than that, something else that isn't in the newsletter I forgot to include was our fundraiser for the scholarship program through the beach and the adventure camp. Only got a chance to total up. We just had another donation from a local business, an anonymous donation today, and it's brought our total up to $32.75. So, it's been a huge success in that regard. A lot of donations, a lot of generosity in the community. So, pretty much, what we've decided is that all the folks that have applied to date, regardless of, we might be $100 or $200 shy of the total at this point, and I anticipate, you know, there may be more donations that trickle in. I anticipate that we're pretty much going to be in a break-even situation with the donations compared to the need. So, my plan is to just assign kids to thank you notes, send out the thank you notes, and we'll call it, call it good. So.
Ballpark figure on the cost of Mike REC? A ballpark figure?
$32.95.
Right here at the bottom of the page.
At the bottom of the page.
Very bottom of the page.
Do you have that in your budget?
I'm not sure. I would have to sit with Mike and try to, because we went over on certain things. This Pat, with Dewey Field and stuff like that, we're still squaring that away. So, we have some, as you know, monies that are encumbered, but they're really pretty specific. They're like, for instance, I think there's like $700 or $800 that is specific to the jungle gym at Dewey Field. So, very specific stuff. So, I would, I, I can sit with Mike when he gets back, and we can, we can look at it. But it's certainly going to be, I think that as I'm going through from one season to the next, and I'm realizing just the volume of administration, you know, for instance, we had, we had another camper in the sale camp canceled today, this afternoon, upon arriving at sale camp. So, that involves me going back to the school after this meeting and making phone calls to people on the waitlist for sale camp. And it's just, you know, it's just administrations, paperwork, some time, nothing but time that could otherwise be spent doing different stuff that, projects at Crystal Beach, projects at Dewey Field, projects at this school. It's a trade-off that I'm running. So, that's that. If anybody's got any questions.
I do. I have one, John. Can you touch on the season passes, the costs to the castle residents? You knew this was coming. So, can you just touch on that?
Yeah, I heard about it this morning as I was, I happened to be talking with Martha Clifford this morning about the scholarship funds, and Jim, Amy came in and mentioned it, that he had heard about it. And so, I guess that was a decision that was made on some level, either by the recreation committee, or it was a conscious decision on some level. You know, from my point of view, I think that it's, it should be fairly easily reversed, if in fact, it's something that the, you know, where that, where that decision lies, you know, in terms of whether or not to reverse it or not, is another matter.
Can you, can you explain it a little bit more to the other board members, what we're talking about?
Okay, so I guess the, when the season pass holders went to purchase season pass holder, season pass holders from Hubbardon were charged a different rate than season pass holders from Castleton. And so, that was unexpected. It's not something any, any of the folks could explain apparently adequately to residents of Hubbardon. And it's been kicked back and forth on emails, several, between several parties. And I've made it clear that this was just something that I was made aware of after the fact.
I thought there was always a different rate for Castleton residents and other towns.
Apparently not.
Can I jump in?
Absolutely, Dick.
Okay, Castleton residents pay $20 for a season pass. Non-residents pay 75. Historically, we have charged Hubbardon residents 35. So, the, I believe it was Martha Clifford and/or the REC Commission made the decision to not discount Hubbardon residents this year, primarily because they didn't, they're, they're not part of the school district anymore. Castleton Hubbardon School District doesn't exist, and they felt that it wasn't necessary to give them a discount anymore. Who exactly they were, I can't say it was Martha. I can't say who it was. It was done at that REC Commission level, not done by the town government. That, that's all I know about it so far.
Yeah, and there was other things.
Certainly makes sense.
Yeah. I mean, Martha mentioned something about the...
Not in town is not taxed.
Not in town is not in town. You're either paying taxes that fund the beach or you're not. Correct.
Martha mentioned they, they do pay $1,500 per year for something. I don't know if it's for REC or for what.
If I, if I could jump in.
Please. Is that Martha? Please.
Okay, so historically, and this, it's not a long history. Hubbardon did contribute $1,500 towards recreation programming. Now, I'm not sure, I don't remember anything about the specifics. All I know is that they, they agreed to, to contribute a donation of $1,500. And what the commission did is allow the youth, the kids in town, to participate in all our programming at a resident rate. And then, since we have, they have divested their interest in, in Castleton, then the commission had a discussion about what do we do? And we thought that now they would need to go as a non-resident payer.
So, the commission made that decision, Martha? Is that, was that what I just heard out of you?
Yes.
Okay. I have my feelings on that, but I mean, I guess we should, we should have somehow notified the Hubbardon residences. They showed up, a person showed up at the gate from Hubbardon and was expecting to pay the same thing as they did last year, and the people at the gate said, no, you owe us 75 bucks, and there was no explanation, is what it, what it all boiled down to. So, that's, I don't know. I don't, I've got my feelings on it. It doesn't necessarily agree with some of the other board members. I guess it could be a discussion for another night, but so, we're going to settle on Hubbardon people paying the non-resident rate? Is that what we're, is that, I mean, I was told you're in charge of it, John.
That is kind of part of the process for, you know, the, the resolution on the bylaws for the commission. They're still, they still have the, the authority vested in them to do stuff like that. So, it's well within Martha and the board's power to do it, I think, as far as I know. So, you know, I'm sure they can address it. They have a meeting tomorrow night. If they'd like to rethink it based upon the board's recommendation, they can, you know, change it back as easy as they changed it to 75. But, you know, I, I don't really have a good understanding on the, where that $1,500 goes, whether or not it has been paid and received, and because there was other things that associated with the school that was supposed to be paid, and as we all know, they went in arrears for many years and had to be resolved at the time of closing. So, I don't know necessarily that Hubbardon has been in fact paying that $1,500. So, kind of, you know, could be a little fact-finding just to begin with. And it maybe, it's just still, it's still a good value at $75, frankly. So. For me, I'd be looking to go up on all the fees at Crystal Beach. So.
Well, personally, I feel you're a resident or you're not a resident.
I mean, you could do a letter of support to the board on it and just say, no, to the commission, say, hey, you know.
It's a taxpayer-based service.
It is. Crystal Beach needs a lot of work. So.
Okay.
It's nice that we make it available to neighboring towns, to people anywhere. And, and that's, $75 for a season is pretty cheap for a beautiful facility like that, that offers as much as it does.
Truly, truly.
Picnic tables, basketball courts, on and on and on.
Access to the, to the water, access to Lake Balm.
Just a quick resolution to it. When you buy a season pass, what does that entitle you to? Can you come in with like four people in the car, or how does that, how does that work?
It's a carload, right?
It's a carload.
They have just recently had to visit that in regards to, and perhaps Martha can speak to it more clearly, but we had passes to the folks in the Crystal Beach community, Crystal Haven community. They get a certain pass every year, and it entitles them to a certain number of visitors, walking visitors. And so, it's gotten pretty specific. It has had to because entire, you know, 12, 15 people have been coming over and saying, yeah, we're on this pass. So, perhaps Martha could answer that. It is an issue.
I can, I can give you a little more information. What, what our thought is, is that when someone buys a pass, more than likely, they're going to put it on their vehicle. And whatever, how many ever seat belts they have in their car, that's when they can, you know, those are the number of people. So, in our minds, you could have six, seven people in that car, and they could get in on that pass. They're not, that car is not going to go back out and take in another seven people. You know, so that's how we limited the cars. But the neighborhood got a little, I don't know, I, I don't know how, but we were running into some trouble with, you know, just a dozen people coming, walking in. So, we have devised a pass that we hold actually at the beach for the walkers. And on that card, they have identified family members that they would like to have covered under their pass. And there are eight slots for that. So, the people who come in and they say, well, I'm on the Smith Pass, and my name is, and the girls at the gate take the card out, say, yep, go ahead, enjoy the day.
Okay.
That sounds reasonable, Martha.
Yeah.
Yep.
There you go.
Okay.
Thanks, John.
Martha, can you keep me informed of what happens to the, at the meeting tomorrow night, if this subject comes up?
Well, I will, I will certainly bring the, bring up the topic again.
Okay.
And I'm not sure, you know, as in the bylaws are kind of in, they're, they're kind of still there, but I mean, everybody's tiptoeing around them at this point. But I will certainly bring up the conversation and let you guys know.
Okay, I appreciate it, Martha. Okay. Is there any more questions for John from the board?
I'm all set.
You're all set, Dick?
He's gone.
Yep.
Okay, he left anyways. We beat him up too bad. Oh, boy. Last thing on the agenda is the passive grant, approval to purchase items under the grant. I don't see Justin here to speak on that.
I don't think there's anything.
There is.
Nothing in the packet?
Just a placeholder.
Yeah, and it was nothing put in the, so I guess we'll have to move that to the next, the next luck board meeting on the 27th. Yes, go ahead.
We should ask, we should ask whoever iPhone 2 is to identify themselves. If they're going to participate in the meeting, we should know who it is.
Karen's on it.
Thank you. Okay, now you can move on, Bob. Thank you.
Okay. Dick, what do you know about that passive grant? Anything?
I know nothing about it. It's something that Justin does every year. It's usually stuff, I believe there's some body armor in there, but I don't, I don't pretend to have any specifics.
Okay, he's not here to speak on it, so we're going to have to skip over it, I believe.
Well, if he shows up later and we can sneak it in, we should do so, but in the meantime, we'll have to table it until the next meeting.
That's what we're going to do, is table it till the next meeting for now. Okay, we got this townwide reappraisal discussion. Tyler Technologies, PBR, and Town Assessor. And we have them here.
She may be online, and she may not, but she's, she's coming in on Zoom, so. She's just, it's Kristy Wright from PBR.
Have her come up.
And if she, if she's not on.
Can you come up to the microphone? Because they're having a hard time hearing you. Andrew.
Could it be somebody else?
No, it would just be Kristy, if anybody. And she was, she was going to try to zoom in and basically just clarify anything that she may hear that may not be accurate. So, we were sort of expecting other community members here who have been kind of vocal this last week. So. But anyway, what I have to offer is, I think in your packet, Mike asked me to put in a little information, basically the statute that talks about reappraisal, which the, in particular, is of interest, is the Director of Property Valuation and Review determines that a municipality's municipal grant list has a coefficient of dispersion greater than 20, or that municipality has not timely appraised pursuant to subsection D. So, the laws have changed a little bit. We just fell into that category this year, which is the order I'm requesting to be signed. But we were trying to be proactive, knowing that this was coming down the pike, watching the sales happen the last few years. And so, we put an RFP out, and we've hired Tyler Technologies to do townwide reappraisal, which is happening this year. Any other appraisal companies? We only had one other bid, and they were out to 2028. And my understanding is nobody's bidding right now because they're so far out, they don't know what the cost is going to be to them. So, anyway, so we're underway, and John can answer some questions specific to that. I also added, what is reappraisal, for your information? And I think I took out of my lister handbook the various approaches to value. So, there was a lot of discussion at the last meeting about income approach. There was an assertion that it was unconstitutional, and it was only income, it wasn't asking for expenses and things like that. It's a very valid approach. It's one of three. We have cost, we have market, sales, and income. So, I just wanted you guys to have that information to digest, that you understood that what we're doing is correct. And we are trying to do it efficiently as possible this year. And we are officially under orders by the tax department to do so. And moving forward, they're asking towns to do it every six years unless they are okay with, unless they're okay with where the town is at as far as their numbers and sales. So, the rules are changing, and I think they're really sort of pushing for statewide reappraisal. I think they're kind of creeping in that direction down the road. So, I don't know if there's specific questions. I don't know. I mean, Charlie Brown's not here.
I know.
He's the one who's been really at Mike this last week or two. So.
So I heard through the grapevine that the state wants to take this over and do the reappraisals themselves, I mean, is that?
Well, you know, they're moving towards more of a, I think, towards a statewide system. They're not there yet, I think that, um, I think there's a lot of things that could happen. But, you know, with anything legislatively and legislature changes every few years, everybody needs to reinvent the wheel. So, you know, your guess is as good as mine. But I think, I think it's a good thing that Castleton is doing this now. I think the numbers certainly show that, um, you know, at seventy percent common level appraisal or at twenty percent common level dispersion, things aren't balanced and they're not equalized.
She's here.
Okay, so if there's any, if there, if you have questions for, um, property valuation review, Christie is online as well.
I'm going to ask that on you. Yep.
What is her last name?
Christie Wright.
Wright.
I think that this is the first time that you've used the income basis in Castleton, is that correct?
Yeah, you know, I, it came after the last appraisal, my understanding, and I don't know whether it's truth or fiction, is that it was attempted and there was pushback, probably kind of like there was now. And I don't know if they just.
From the select board perspective, I wish we had been in that loop. You know, knowing that there was going to be that income, uh, basis applied in the reappraisal. So we had citizens come in and say, hey, what's this all about? We got a letter and they want to know what our rental income is and we're sitting here dumb. So if we had been prepared for that, that would have been a lot easier. I certainly understand that and it make, to me, it makes perfect sense that you have the three tools to appraise a piece of property. It's supposed to be appraised at its highest and best use. If we were selling our property, that's how we'd want it appraised. And we should all in the community want every piece of property appraised to its highest and best use. So the grant list can be distributed fairly. And, and I think that's what we all want. We were just caught unprepared when, when Charlie came in with us. And, uh, it doesn't feel good when you can't answer a citizen's question. That was our standpoint. Other than that, I personally don't have any questions, it seems to me like it's absolutely the right approach. Me, I don't, I'm just one person on the board though.
I think the three different approaches make a lot of sense. It's unfortunate that when the citizen came to the board last, last meeting, we were not prepared. I agree with Mark Brown on that. And it's also unfortunate that he was either mistaken or misinformed when he suggested it was only based on income and didn't take expenses into account, which is most definitely not the case. So I personally don't have a problem with the three different approaches and I have no questions at this time.
Rob, do you have some questions?
Are we just using commercial rentals or are we evaluating Airbnbs once again? I asked it last week because you can't value something that generates an income as a single family residence. It's not fair for the people that have rental properties.
Well, we don't have, we don't have a listing and there's not a registry in Castleton for Airbnb. So we don't really have the tool to go after that at the moment. I think if someone's using a portion of their home or if they have a cabin on their property that they're renting out, I would think that would come up when, um, Tyler Technologies visits them. We've sent out the questionnaires as a, as a, or the data collection forms as a first step. But, um, contact with people and, and visiting them and finding out what exactly they, they have. John might be better prepared to answer that question. But, you know, Castleton's really worried about Airbnbs and how many there are and where they are and, you know, whether they're, you know, proper and safe and all of that. You might want to discuss and, um, you know, having a registry.
We're working on that currently.
And, um.
But that doesn't really answer the question, is if you're valuing, valuing somebody out for renting their house when somebody else is doing the exact same thing. So these guys are going to have a higher value on their house for a rental than said person that's bought their house primarily for.
Well, we, we have to, we have to know that. So if we do know that, if I know that, that portion of their home, they're being charged for non-residential rates. So if you're renting out twenty percent of your home.
Well, those people with Airbnbs are renting out a hundred percent of their home.
Well, then they shouldn't be getting homestead rates or homestead declarations. Because they're, they're making money, they're rent, they're renting, they're not, they're not putting there. So, you know, things like that do come up and we deal with it as we can.
Okay.
When we know that, you know, I do peruse Airbnb, so, you know, I, I make myself aware of properties that are renting. So those questions will, will be, um, coming up, um, during this process as well. But a registry, I don't think is the worst idea, you know, I don't know. You know, you can't really, um, for Airbnb's and things, I mean, you could do a, a special tax, but you'd be taxing all commercial property, I believe.
I believe we would have the option to charge a one percent tax on just short-term rentals, but.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Um, typically option taxes, um, commercial properties and storefronts and things like that. They pay, if they're, if they're on Airbnb, they pay the state room and meals tax. I don't think the town necessarily benefits from that, it's nine percent currently, it will be thirteen percent come August. So the legislature's jumped on that. But whether any of that could come back to the town could be another legislative question, I suppose.
Go ahead, Mary.
I have a concern that, okay, you know Charlie has property. But how many people will not be charged because you don't know that there's a rental in there, is that fair? Say I'm, say I'm renting and you don't know it, but you know Charlie is. So Charlie's going to get hit with a whatever, but I'm not. Shouldn't there be some way to make sure that everybody is equal?
Well, I think, um, if you're filing a homestead declaration, you are supposed to be declaring if you're renting property out. So if that gets reported to the tax department, they're going to come back with the questions. If somebody, if somebody declares a homestead declaration, if I know that they're renting a portion of that home, but they're trying to claim the whole thing, I'll send a message. And I'm not the homestead police, that's been made very clear in my job, that's not my job. But I'll send a message back and say, this property is fifty percent rental. And they will go back to that property owner and they also have access to tax returns and things like that, that I don't have access to. And they'll question it. And a lot of times I'll get a revised homestead declaration that says it's only, it's fifty percent business rental use. Or, or they rent an outbuilding or something of that nature.
So it's kind of.
I mean, there's a certain amount of.
If you know about it.
It's built into anything, right? I mean, if, until you get nailed and then all's I can do is move forward, I can't move backwards.
Okay, are you talking strictly about houses that are being rented?
Apartments, houses, outbuildings. A lot of people rent outbuildings or they have a business use in their outbuilding. You know, they might have a, you know, a garage or a workshop or something. So those are, those are things that they need to claim on their, on their, um, homestead declaration and their tax return.
Okay, another question, I think. I have a farm, so obviously I have workshops, you know, bays for tractors and whatnot. They should be, I'm not renting to anyone, I'm using them myself.
So that's your personal use.
Okay, I think I understand, thank you.
I mean, if you're renting it out, you should claim that you're renting it out. If you're using it for personal use, it's your own personal use.
Okay, thank you.
Mary Jo, who was responsible for that survey? I don't think I've ever got one for all the years I've lived in Castleton. Did you generate that or did Tyler Technologies?
Well, Tyler, Tyler generated it, my name's on it.
Okay.
Um, you know, we're sort of trying to work in partnership, um, so that, you know, I've got, I've gotten tremendous amount of phone calls and there's been a huge response. And I know there's errors in it, but there's still, you know, people are giving the feedback, so, um, so that's been great. So it's, it's like a starting point. And what, what, what the idea was is to take the data collection form and transpose, you know, merge your information that's on your property record card and then for you to go through it. And I know that there's abbreviations people don't understand.
Mm-hmm.
And I know that there's a couple of columns that picked up something, such as fireplaces.
That was Mike.
Okay, I've gotten a hundred phone calls.
Me too.
About fireplaces, I'm just cross it out, if you don't have a fireplace, cross it out. So it's a starting point for them to have data so that when they go and visit people or call people and they can just go through it and it just, it might streamline things. Some people have things that aren't there, some people, you know, the shed is gone, the garage is gone or something. So it's, it's to correct inaccuracies as best as possible, it's the first step.
The hardest part was I came in and asked you what a T one was.
Right, right. So the abbreviations aren't helpful to laypeople.
So I have one. Just go ahead and answer, like, as long as you're right there, what is a T one?
One story with a, with a three-quarter story above it, so one and three-quarter story.
Hey, we have no idea.
I'm only one and a half.
So you better be correcting it.
I did.
So I have one more question. So Tyler Technologies has the contract to do this work. But it appears that the cost of the mailing and the printing may be coming from the town. Is that the way it's supposed to work?
It's in the contract that we take care of mailings.
That's in the contract that you do the ma- the town does the mailing? Okay, thank you, just wanted to clarify that.
Hopefully we've done the mailings that we need to do. I'm, I'm not overly thrilled with the mailings that were done, but it is what it is.
It is what it is.
You knew about this going out with the Town of Castleton and your name on it, you knew about it, right?
Yes, I did know about it.
Okay.
Yes, I did.
Okay, just not to beat you up anymore, but like Mark said, this has got to come before the board before anything like this goes out again.
So, right, so, so I guess that's a question that we need answered. Is when we contracted with this company, I was not made aware by anyone that anything needed to come through the board. So if the board wants to know everything that's happening, you know, it's another layer of things, so I, I'm, you know.
Well, in all fairness, all fairness to this board, Mary Jo, when it goes out with the Town of Castleton on it and our assessor's name is on the bottom, we have got to know when the taxpayers get this. Like Charlie Brown, I think he was going to come right through the phone and strangle me because I didn't know what he was talking about.
I think Charlie Brown could have stopped in to talk with me since my name's on it, I know Charlie Brown very well. And instead, he decided he would go to Mike on numerous occasions and just lay into him and pretty much repeat the same thing, which is only partial information and kind of create a bit of unnecessary hysteria. And I don't, nothing against Charlie Brown, but.
No, he wasn't the only one. I mean, we, we have got to know about this going out, we got to be aware of it. When the, when the taxpayers call us, we got to have an answer for them, we can't, I, I was embarrassed.
Okay.
I was totally embarrassed.
So are you saying you want the board to approve it or just include it in the packets for the meeting?
We got to see it.
Before we're hit.
There was a fundamental change in the way property was being evaluated. And this is where people come when they're upset, so we should have had some sort of.
So I've never been through this type of townwide reappraisal.
Fair enough.
I understand how a townwide reappraisal works, I think it's pretty standard practice how, how these companies operate. I think they all operate very similarly. I don't know why or why not, um, people haven't gotten income expense forms before. I've gotten a lot of phone calls from people who, you know, they're, they're just, they've needed a little more time. I mean, they're fine with it, they understand it, it's not, they see what it is, it's, it's totally legitimate. I think if you do the three types of, of, of valuation, you should be able to see a balance across the board.
They should all be the same.
And that will confirm that you're doing things correctly. So, um, you know, I, I don't know. But I, I was not unaware, I mean, our contract talks about setting out dat- data mailers, the website talks about sending out data mailers, um, you know, I think so far that they've attempted to, you know, reach out to the community with the information on how the process is, is going to work. You know, whether people choose to read that or not, I don't know. But, um, I guess I need clarification of, as to exactly what the select board needs to see before next steps happen, um, each time. Because they're going to, they're going to be in the field, um, I'm meeting with them tomorrow. We need to discuss how that's going to work and how we're going to let people in neighborhoods know, um, how to make appointments. And that they're going to be out there and who they are and all that, so.
Dick, do you have anything? Is he still there? Dick, are you still there?
He's muted.
Okay, let me try to start this again, when John and Mary Jo and I spoke last week, it was agreed that if they were going to do any sort of mailing or, you know, when they start inspections, just to inform us that it's happening, that we're not going to expect, we don't want to give the level of scrutiny where we want to scrutinize and approve or disapprove any of their next steps. We just want to know what their, what their, what the vendor is up to and what Mary Jo is up to. So that if, when, when they send out indications to do inspections, for example, we're aware that that part of the process is starting. So if someone calls us and asks questions about it, we at least know what the next steps are and what's going on. This time around, we didn't have any, any, I was not informed and we had no idea as a board that these letters were going out and that's how we managed to get blindsided last meeting. Does that sound like what you remember, Mary Jo?
Yeah, that's fine, we don't have a problem with that.
Maybe.
Yeah, that was a. When, when, when they're starting to do inspections and they're going to do another mailing, we'll know about it when it happens.
Yeah, and, and we're going to be posting, um, on the webpage, um, you know, we can, Mike does Facebook, I can ask him to post on Facebook as, as they're out, where they are, what to expect, how to call, you know, any of that information. Front porch forum, we can put something on there as well.
Just got a good suggestion here, maybe Mike can include it in his manager's report at every meeting. So we say, just do it that way, so you don't have to come in and, and every meeting or whatever.
Yep.
Just go to Mike and say, hey, this is going out whenever, let the select board know.
She probably wants to come in.
Oh, maybe.
We all do, Mary Jo.
Thank you, Mary Jo.
Thank you so much.
Yes, yes, can you come up to the microphone?
Did you need Cindy for anything, she's on here. Christie?
No, I think she's raising her hand if she had something to add. Right, Christie?
Could you just introduce yourself, Erin?
Hi, I'm John Vickery, I'm the senior project manager for this reappraisal, so I'm the point person and, um, happy to talk with you anytime you want, I'll come right in, I'm right up the road. I do want to point out a couple of things, one is that we want to appraise all the properties at market value. Depending on, doesn't, it doesn't matter which approach, they should arrive at market value. That's the fairest way to apply the, the tax base in the most distributed way. What we're, uh, going to be doing in the next month or so is we've received a lot of data mailers, almost a thousand, between eight hundred and a thousand, we have, I don't have an official count. And we've divided those data mailers into quadrants or sections of the town. And our goal is to start next week on the properties around the lake. And we want to do the lake first because people are home and people are visiting and they're around. So we'll go from there and then when we get to a point where we have done all those inspections, we'll probably move, um, towards, towards Hydeville and, and that area, um, and that part of town. And then we'll move over towards the village area and we'll do the rural areas last. So over the next several months, um, we're going to have several people in sections of town and so forth. The good part about the data mailers and all of the returns that we've had is it's given us better information so we can, uh, get that, those changes corrected. But also, um, we have a lot of emails and we have some numbers. But also, we have a lot of emails and we have some numbers as well. And we wanna email everyone and tell them that, hey, we're gonna be in your neighborhood, please give us a call for an inspection. Um, there's, I know there's gonna be a lot of door knocking with folks that don't want an inspection or don't wanna set up one, but we wanna give the folks that want an opportunity to have an inspection to actually visit their house or their business or whatever it is and do those inspections. So that's coming right around the corner. And so thank you for letting me have this meeting because that's, we wanna start next week. Um, I wanna let everyone know that. And we're gonna start in that section, that section of town. Uh, we're still prepping. We're still creating a, a database. We have organized all the data mailers that have come in so far, thus far. And we also have property record cards all printed out and ready to go. And then I'm gonna have a, a group of inspectors that are gonna be here. All of them have a certain level of experience. Most of them have about three years of experience. Uh, the, the one with the least amount of experience has been working for a little over a year and up to, um, one that has about nine years of, of experience. So they're experienced and they know what they're doing.
Can you stop right there? Are they gonna be wearing some kind of identification card?
Thank you for asking. That's why I brought this. Everybody has a badge with their photo, with the Tyler logo, with the town logo, their name and their title. And their cars, we have a car magnets with the Tyler Technologies logo.
Perfect.
And so, and they're all gonna be in the same area. I want them working together down the streets so that neighbor can call neighbor, hey, they're coming, uh, they're in, I saw them today.
Run, hide.
What's that?
Lock your doors.
Run, hide. Lock your doors.
Yes, that's what some people do.
Let the ugly dog out.
But we, you know, the best way to get the best results is to have accurate information. And so let's strive to get that, the best information that we possibly can. And then we'll work out the, the, the market number, which the market keeps changing a little bit. So that's the, that's the more skilled side of the, the whole thing. So we wanna put out an email. Uh, that'll be one form of communication. I guess the next communication would be when we, when we have sent out values, which will be in the early spring before, in February, because we're gonna have informal hearings. And that'll be, folks can meet with Tyler Technologies appraisers and they can talk to them about their value. What that does is it allows us to correct a lot of, a lot of errors. It allows us to determine, have a second look at properties. We will go out and inspect some of those properties at the time. But it also lightens the load for the assessor's office when it gets to the next level, because most folks will say, yeah, thank you for the review. I'm comfortable now with my value, so.
Can I get you to spell your last name? I didn't quite catch.
Yeah. It's V, it's Vickery, as in V-I-C-K-E-R-Y.
That's how you pronounce it? It's Vickery? Is that how you pronounce it?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. And you're from Tyler Technologies?
Tyler, Tyler Technologies, senior project supervisor.
Where is Tyler Technologies located?
They have multiple locations. They're all over the country.
Oh, okay.
Their, their main base is in Texas and they're really a software company dedicated to the, to the public sector.
Okay.
Uh, they have a lot of different softwares, like a lot. And the, the reappraisal division is their bases in Ohio.
Okay.
And I'm part of the northeast division, which is really technically, it's based in Massachusetts.
Okay.
But we're, we have a, the crew up here that I'm in charge of.
Okay.
Any questions? Anything about the approaches to value, I'm happy to answer before I step back.
I'm sure we're gonna have a lot, but I don't know if we have it right here at the time.
Well, I wanna make sure that, because I think there's some questions floating around about the, the income approach and so forth. It's standard procedure to send out income and expense forms to businesses that would be purchased based on the cash flow to value, based on the rental income and so forth. So, and that's not just done here, it's done all over the place. We've been doing it for years. And I apologize for catching you guys, folks, off guard. It's not a form that is passed out every year. Some municipalities send them out every year and, and they receive a certain amount back. Uh, it helps them to really follow the market. In our case, we're just coming in, so this one-time shot. Regardless, we'll do our best and we'll do the best we can with the information that we have. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Dick, did you have anything for Mr. Vickery? Hear himself again?
I'm also. We, uh, we talked last week.
Okay, okay. We'll see you on a regular basis, Mr. Vickery?
Yeah, you want?
We'll just get ahold of you when we, we need to bring you in. I don't expect you to show up at every meeting.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Send your privacy cards to Mike.
Roy, do you have a comment?
Roy Newton, 37 Park Street, Castleton, Vermont. Charlie Brown. I commend him for speaking out on diff- issues that face us. My subject tonight is tax on income and rental units. In terms of assessments of property values, the only values and figures that are important and should be accounted for are the value of the property and the structures on the property and their sales and transfers. Writing into this tax assessment program is discriminatory in nature. The revenue generated on a property, be it from rental units, slate, agriculture projects, auto services, or any other type of revenue, is not relevant to the figure that I think it may even be unconstitutional. We will not assess the value of heads of cows, tons of slate, auto services rendered, or other vital services and products. Those are accounted in the economy that is in need of growth. Can you imagine asking a real estate agent's office to ask how much income they made on each sale as they are generating revenue from that office? What about the local marina? Will you tax every single slot under the storage sheds and inquire about income received from each in one of the units? What about the dock spaces? What about all the rental storage units in town? Are you going to ask for the rental income of each solitary unit? Not to mention the homes with online businesses. This is sort of double taxation. As everyone knows, the internal revenue taxes your income and the point of sale to require and build on the materials for each of those structures and properties. Here we are, folks, in a housing crisis, young people leaving the state in grows, and you want to place more of a burden on the people in rental units and discourage those who can invest from building more in their community. This is the last place you should be concerned about targeting tax, which will fall on the shoulders of the tenants. This is a movement in the wrong direction for town governments to even consider towns should express their concerns to the state and to the Vermont League cities and towns. Every time we add a new stream of tax to grow revenue source, we build out government to assess and accounts, account the stream. And this in turn enables a continual increase in manpower and bodies, responsibilities, and reach of the government into ordinary life of citizens. I think we need to minimize our need for additional revenue, be more disciplined in how public monies are generated and spent so to avoid this downward spiral. The more taxes we impose already translates to new tax demands down the road. Government at every level needs to be physically responsible. In short, this is the wrong direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newton.
Thank you, Roy.
Any questions?
Do we have any more of those copies of the-
Here's one.
You gotta keep one too. You need to keep one. I just wondered if we could-
Oh, I got another one.
Yeah, yeah.
I think.
Roy, do you have any extra of those?
No, I don't.
No? It's okay. I just wanted to see if John or Mary Jo would be interested in taking that.
Roy, I'd just like to-
Eric, can you make, would all select board members have copies?
We, we've got, we've got copies, Dick, but we'll make sure you get one in your, oh, that's enough, that's enough. I just-
Not agreeing or disagreeing with you, but this is, um, part of the official Vermont government website on how to appraise property. That it's, this, this is new to Castleton this year, but it's certainly not new. That, uh, most communities have been doing it for a long time.
You're singling out certain businesses against private home, homes. In other words, private homes don't get this extra scrutiny, okay, on income. Businesses, you're now hitting them on the amount of money that they intake. And that is done by your tax returns and it's done by your assessment. Double taxation.
Well, we could debate it a long time, but I appreciate your, uh, your perspective.
We gotta take care of this reappraisal order, 2024. Can I get a motion to authorize Dick Coons, the chairman of this board, to sign the reappraisal order for the state of Vermont?
So moved.
Second, though. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Dick. I'm also an aye. Five zero. State of Vermont Department of Taxes, 2024 reappraisal order for signature. And we just did that. That's what we just did. That's your 4041A.
We're up to diesel bid now.
Yep. Well, thank you, Dick.
Excuse me, Bob. Will Dick be back from vacation this week to sign that?
You're back on Friday, Dick? That was the question.
I'll be back Friday, Friday afternoon. It might be fairly late, but I'll be back Friday afternoon.
Is that quick enough, Mary Jo?
I think, I think so, yeah. Yeah, yeah, that should be happening.
Okay, you'll come in and sign all that stuff, Dick? Yep.
Yeah, I'll, you know, even if it's after hours, I'll sign it, so I'll be there Monday morning, first thing when you come in.
Thanks. Thank you.
Do you need this particular? Okay. Uh, okay, diesel bid award, highway four minutes. Jeff on the-
He is.
Okay. Make sure he's unmuted himself, please.
Yes, sir.
You wanna speak to this, Jeff?
Uh, yeah, this is a diesel bid for summer. Um, we got, uh, two quotes. Local did not get back to us. We have, uh, on-road diesel was the recommendation. Um, it, it's actually somehow cheaper than the off-road. And with a new truck coming in, uh, on-road is the way to go as we voided a warranty on the Dodge 5500 by using off-road.
I was aware of that, yes. Okay.
On-road is, on-road is cheaper than off-road?
Uh, not normally.
Yeah, there's, there's a new tax, um, for cleanup on off-road diesel.
So are we, are we gonna see the off-road diesel be more expensive than the on-road? Is that what you're saying, Jeff?
Uh, who knows? Champlain Valley gave us a lock-in price. Um, no, nobody else would give us a lock-in and their lock-in on-road was cheaper than everyone else's off-road. So it's kind of a no-brainer at that point.
Sure, sure.
Jeff, your recommendation is to, uh, award the bid to 6,000 gallons of Champlain Valley?
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion that we award a bid of, or we award a purchase of 6,000 gallons of diesel to Champlain Valley at $2. It's gonna be $2.861, is that correct?
Two point six seven.
Yes, that's what I, we have in front of us.
Two point eight six one.
And what, what is the time period on that? That's-
I believe that's good through September. Uh, the, the 6,000 gallons will get us where we start to contemplate, uh, the winter blend.
Okay, I didn't even see, I didn't even see the 6,000 gallons on this.
It's on the top.
It's on the top, right there it is. Okay. Sorry. Stumbled here a little bit. Do I, you made the motion, Dick. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, all those in favor of awarding at the Champlain Valley at $2.861?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Keep going, Jeff. Calcium chloride purchase from Peckham Industries for approval.
Calcium chloride. You guys are probably looking at a PO. It includes a winter blend and a straight 35%. We'll be looking for the 3,000, uh, straight 35%, not the winter blend. Uh, we're kinda being held hostage by Allstate for a while, so I called around. Um, Peckham is a little bit cheaper and have been highly recommended by Wilk. So we're gonna branch out and, uh, have a, have another vendor at this point.
Do we need to have three bids or we already purchased it?
Did you get that question, Jeff? I, I can't answer that.
Do we need to have three bids for this? Or did we already do that?
This is one of those weird ones, guys, where I know about the three bid or two at a minimum. Since I've been here, Allstate was the only supplier. And I went to put an order in and they gave me some crazy timeframe and I'm not a huge fan of being held hostage. So I, I, you know, reached out and I actually found a little bit cheaper, uh, for another supplier. So right, right now, we're at 118 from ASM Allstate and 115 for Peckham.
Just wanted to make sure we're doing it right.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Yes, sir.
I understand. Do I have a motion on the purchase order? Might as well do it right now, right? Yep.
Let me ask Jeff a question for clarity. Jeff, um-
I'm sorry, Dick.
So you're not going for just the second line of this purchase order to be approved at present, or do you want both lines approved?
No, just the second, please.
So I'll make a motion, we approve-
Hold on.
Purchase order number 052644 for a purchase of 3,000 gallons of 1117 calcium chloride 35% for $3,450.
Do I have a second and we'll have discussion? We got questions on the board.
I'll, I'll second it. But are we gonna need another purchase order because this purchase order's for 6,900?
We're only approving part of the purchase order. I think that that'll stand up to an audit. What do you, do you have any thoughts on that, Karen?
I do not.
Okay.
I, I, Dick, I didn't see where we're only doing the one. I don't know where, where you see that. Maybe you got-
No, I said, I specifically made a motion to include only the 3,000 gallons of 1117. I did not mention the other item.
I know, but the other item's on this purchase order, but you seem to, you seem to know that we were only doing one of the two. And I'd-
Well, then let me add one more, to include the exclusion of 3,000 gallons of Formula 1116 winter calcium chloride. This will not be included in the purchase order. Total price of the purchase order will be $3,450.
Okay.
So what do you do? Cross it out on the purchase order? Because if we approve that purchase order, it's 6,900.
Our motion now specifically says we are not ordering that winter blend, so we can just cross that out. And we only approve the order amount of $3,450.
So you want me to cross out that first line right on this original purchase order?
I would.
Okay. All I was asking you, Dick, is how, how did you know that we were only doing one of the two? That's all, I don't see that in any-
That's what Jeff just said.
I just asked Jeff that specific question and that was the answer I got.
Okay. All right.
While you were writing.
Yeah, I just, I'm just, okay.
Have a lot going on.
Well, I just, yeah, I don't, I don't know how, Dick, how you knew enough to, to say that, but, okay. All right, we'll just, we'll just do that.
I just asked Jeff. Bob, I just asked Jeff the question, he gave me the answer, so then I made a motion based on Jeff's answer.
All right.
I, I'll make sure that it's clear next time and not included on the purchase order. So there's, we haven't branched out into winter anti-icing agents, which is what that winter calcium chloride would be.
Okay, all right.
So we can, this is a summertime thing.
Okay. I call the question, all those in favor of the purchase order?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. You and I? Aye, okay, Dick. Passes five zero. So Jeff needs to sign this PO, it says on it, so. Okay. You're all set there with that? All right. Wow, okay. So we're all set with the calcium acceptance of the grants and aid award $15,000 for fiscal year 2025? You're on, you're on the hook there, Jeff, for that too.
Yep, that has been awarded from the state. We do not have segments determined yet. I'm still kind of working on that. That's 15,000 free. I think we're, uh, we'd be on the hook for around $3,500 of our in-kind match. So 15,000, $3,000 essentially.
Now, before we run, that in-kind match can be our trucking, our own gravel, things of that nature, is that correct?
Yeah, that's trucking, that could be gravel. Um, I recently found out calcium chloride is included in that, guardrails. If, if we put it on our reconstruction summary, it's covered.
Okay. So I'll make a motion, we authorize the acceptance of the grants and aid award for $15,000 for fiscal year 2025.
I'll second that.
Uh, just, we have to authorize Mike to sign it, Dick. Is, can you, you want to include that in the motion?
Is that? I did the, I didn't tell. Yes, and I amend my motion to include the authorization of the town manager to sign the agreement.
And we have a second on it. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is the one we were just doing, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Let's see. You might be off the hook now, Jeff.
Yeah, hey, no, no, I'm good. If, if you guys ever have any questions about the grants or what we're going after, or roads, or why we're approaching these roads, always feel free to swing down to the shop or contact me. We can take a ride and, um, you know, kind of, kind of see the, the method, the madness.
We appreciate that, Jeff.
Yeah, good work on getting this grant, Jeff. We appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's my pleasure, gentlemen, ladies.
Okay. The resolution for the 24-02 incumbents for public buildings slash CBS. And I don't know if that's a, a Mike thing.
I'll make a motion, we approve resolution number 2402 as presented. So Simon, I want to sign general funds for the operating budget for the Castleland Village School.
You second it, Rob?
I second it, yeah.
Okay. Any discussion on this? Anybody raising their hands?
I will say, we checked with the auditors to make sure that we could generate this encumbrance after the end of the fiscal year. And we were assured today by the auditors that it was acceptable and legal to do so.
Oh, good.
Thank you, Dick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Passes five zero. All right.
So you can get, so Bob, you can get the four signatures of the people present and I'll be happy to sign it on Friday.
Okay, is this the original one, Karen? Or is there a different one?
Was that from the blue folder?
Uh, no, this is in my packet.
Then there should be a flag on.
It's not this.
If not, then just sign that.
Just sign this one?
Yeah.
Okay. Just give us 30 seconds, Dick, and we'll get this signed.
All right.
And I'll hand it to Karen and she'll have one more thing for you.
Well, Karen, I'll probably just find a blue folder in my mailbox when I show up at the office Friday, right?
Correct.
Okay, I wait on the girl.
You want that right now?
Sure.
Okay. Game up. Did you find that for us?
I will.
Hand that to Karen and we're done with that. Next thing on the agenda is the Hubbardton buyout, former Castleton Village School, CBS.
I can give you a little background here, Bob.
All right, yep, have at it.
Um, there was, if you look on your ARPA worksheets, which were updated a couple of weeks ago after the last meeting, um, the line on there to obligate $29,000 and change, I don't recall the exact number off the top of my head, was, uh, was there to, to finance the purchase of the Castleland Village School. With this encumbrance, we should be able to reduce that number by $10,000. So I would suggest that at this point, we encumber not more than $20,000 of ARPA funds to make the payment to cover it in for the Castleland Village School Hall. All right, I'll make, that's my motion.
Thank you, that's what I was going to ask you.
I'll second it.
Any questions on that, guys?
Yeah, for discussion purposes, um, once this sugars off and we know a little bit more, which may happen in the next week or two,
we can always rescind that encumbrance and put out a new, better, more accurate number. But at this point in time, at least we can authorize our attorneys to, to pay the, pay the bill and pay Hubbardton and settle up with them and then we can worry about the nuances of the funding sometime in the next meeting or two if needed. We may not need to do that at all.
What's that number again, Dick?
The total number was, for this motion was not to exceed 20,000.
Thank you.
What, can you, can you reread the motion? What he, what he just said?
Well, he's making a motion to encumber ARPA funds, not any amount, not 20,000 to pay for.
Okay, okay. I just want us clear what he did. Okay. And we got a second on it, are you guys? All right, can I call the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye for me.
I vote aye.
Okay, five zero. All right. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Oh, the UDR discussion for adoption. Are we tackling that tonight, Dick?
Yes, and I would ask Mr. Brown if he's willing to make a motion.
Uh, I would make a motion to accept the UDR as presented.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion?
Yes. I am concerned. I've spent a lot, a lot of time reading it and got to admit, I haven't read it all. But there are several places that say reasonable. What's reasonable to who? Um, another place was on, um, motorhomes, trailers, or whatever that you own having to be, what did you say, behind the house?
Yeah, I forget where it was.
I have 183 acres, but behind my house is a hill. I couldn't put a motorhome or a trailer there.
I didn't see that. Do you know where that is?
Yeah, it's right, it's right on page 42.
I really feel that we ought to.
So you can't? You want me to fill them in because I got it right in front of me?
Go ahead.
You can't park a camper in your yard for more than two consecutive weeks unless you park it behind, it's your yard, you park it behind the front face of the principal building and no closer than six feet away from any lot line, or it has a screened view from neighboring properties and roads. A trailer parked shall not be used as living quarters and shall not be hooked up to any utilities. Now, for example, my buddy Mark goes camping maybe once a month. His driveway is on the side of his house. He has no way to park his camper behind his house. Technically, he's in violation using his driveway. He stores it in the winter at the fairgrounds and he uses it once a month, but because it's not gone every weekend, he's in violation of that. Now, I understand we don't want campers popped up all around town and people living out of them year-round, but, I mean.
On the other hand, if you have a camper and you're having company or a reunion or something and you can't fit them all in your house, is it really a problem to have four people sleep in the camper for three, four days or something?
And I mean, we currently.
I think we're getting socialist.
We currently have no zoning for any more hotels to pop up, so it's not like we can house any more people in the area.
But I, I'm really concerned about this reasonable, and that reasonable goes in several places.
Well, I think specific to, I think specific to the RV thing, I think a lot of common sense is in, comes into play there. You know, there's two RVs right on River Street that are parked in somebody's driveway adjacent to their house that may not be behind the front plan of the house, but they're not, you're inappropriate, nor are they being treated as a primary domicile. I remember going to a hotel several years ago where there was a camper behind a garage and it was being used as a primary domicile as well as the garage was. So there was actually three families living on one property with a single family house on it. So I think that's what this, um, UDR, this phase of the UDR is all about, is to make sure that they don't get treated as a primary domicile and that they're not parked in, in the front yard.
But should. But should somebody complain, in theory, we would have no choice but to issue a citation if they've got a camper parked on the side of their yard and not behind their house. You can't take reasonable because this doesn't say reasonable. It's pretty clear that it says no owner of a trailer may park it on their own property, provide, you know, behind the face. It has to be behind the face of the principal building. And then it also says you can't live in it, but it's not together. It doesn't say that it has to be parked behind your house if you're going to be using it hooked up to the utilities. Yeah, not living in it for more than two consecutive weeks, that seems reasonable. I don't know how I missed the other part, but you're absolutely right. The owner of the trailer.
Well, does the face of the house, I mean, it has four sides, right? Is each?
The face of the house will be on the roadside.
It has to be.
That's what I.
So you couldn't park it in front of your garage? It's not living in it for two weeks either, Mark. It's, it shall be unlawful for any person to park a camping trailer, travel trailer, or motorhome on any public or private property for more than two consecutive weeks.
Right.
So you can't even just park your camper on the side of your yard. You couldn't park a pop-up camper next to your garage. If the neighbor complains, you're getting a ticket.
Who issues a ticket? Who issues a ticket? Who's going to enforce this UDR?
Mary Lee, who sent the letter out?
Okay. Do you want names?
No, just the title. Whatever their title would be.
Comes around and does this?
Well, I think it would be okay if number three was edited. The owner of a trailer may park it on their own property no closer than six feet to any lot line and shall not be used as living quarters.
Correct.
But to take out behind the front face of the principal building. It's also inconsistent. It's saying that if you have a 10-foot pop-up camper, it can't extend past the front of your house. But if you had a 40-foot boat, you could park that in the front yard. You know, it's not consistent. People have different toys. So what's the difference if a 40-foot boat that you can live in? Is that substantially different than a 40-foot trailer that you live in?
I, I'd like to table this and really go through it word by word by word. Because like you said, you can live in a boat. A lot of those boats are livable. And on the other hand, behind the house, I'm on a hill.
It's not available to everyone.
You can't even put one behind my house.
Right.
I don't have one anymore, but we had a 42-foot before.
Well, you know, there's camping trailers around I'd rather look at than some of the homes.
You've got that right.
No, that's a good point. I, I would have told you that I've read this document word by word three times, and I have. And I don't know how I missed that. Because I am opposed to that. I know that in subdivisions in New Jersey, that's a big thing. You know, you can't, you have to, you can't park a trailer in your own driveway. And, and I don't think that that's, we want to maintain a nice community and an aesthetically pleasing community, but to me, that's a little too far.
Yeah, well, let me just comment one thing here. You know, when you go down the road from my house, there's a guy that's, um, right at the end of our highway road that has a fifth wheel parked in the side of his driveway. It's in front, you know, it's, so it's in front of the face of his house, but I don't think anyone actually has a problem with that. I mean, you know, he doesn't live in it, he just parks it there until when he takes it for a ride.
But down the line.
In the fall, he takes it over somewhere else and stores it elsewhere. I don't know where he stores it. It's not there in the winter, it's only there in the summer. And it's in front of the, it's forward of the face of his house, but it's in the side of his driveway. And really, I don't think it's, I personally don't have a problem with it there.
But technically, it's in vi, it would be in violation of the UDR. It would be.
Agreed. Agreed. So we have to inject some common sense. The other thing that everyone needs to understand is if we change anything in this document, we'll turn the hearing process over again, just so you keep that in mind.
Well, are you going to put something in that isn't right because you don't want to go through the process? You keep saying.
Not necessarily. I just want to make sure everyone is aware of what we, if we do this, we do eyes wide open. That's all I'm saying.
I think what he's saying is the time for changes really was, but now that we've caught this, we can make the change. Just know that we're starting over.
I, I realize that.
I was under the impression that they brought it to us so that we could talk about it last time. And then we were going to talk about it and we were going to talk about it at the next meeting. And that's why we're here for that. That's what I was.
Okay, so we're doing it. So if we want to make some changes, then one of us needs to make the, you know, to modify this particular section. And maybe if Mary Lee's point about what's reasonable needs to be well-defined, then we need to do that as well. So, all right? Because the question is, who's going to do that?
I think it's something that we all have to read again.
The reasonable portion is pretty tough. That seems to be, um, kind of documented, isn't the right word, but it certainly is in state regulations of what, uh, DBRs do, as well as there's a lot of, a lot of verbiage like shall provide for the aesthetics of the downtown area, which is about as concrete as saying within a reasonable distance. And I think the one that you were talking about was, had to do with utilities for a subdivision.
I think it's all, that is.
If someone was doing a subdivision, they would have to bring the utilities to within a reasonable distance of the town infrastructure.
I think there's another space where it said reasonable too.
And that is tough. If it was across 4A, a reasonable distance is much different than if it was on the same side of the street. So it's a double-edged sword. You can't come up with a specific distance that fits all the time. And, and I think that the state has given pretty broad leeway to the development review, review boards to interpret what the planning commission has written for rules and a town plan. And I think it has to be, you know, because we could never, we, we won't, well, I won't live long enough to document all that. All the different possibilities of how close the utilities would have to be. You know, what's reasonable.
Well, if we had that, we wouldn't need a DRB.
We wouldn't need the, right, that's exactly. The planning commission would write the rules and those would be the rules. But the DRB is there to, uh, But the DRB is there to uh. There's a statement about irregular shaped lots. That the DRB can make exceptions to setbacks if it causes an unreasonable hardship. On the appellant, as long as the appellant hasn't created that hardship on their own. That's a little loose. You know, you would hope that reasonable people could look at that and say, well, you know, Bob's lot is our glass-shaped. So on one side of his house, instead of a. 25-foot setback, there's 24.2 inches and that would seem reasonable. Because it doesn't change the character of the zoning for that neighborhood. That's six inches. Now, if you wanted to put a sardine factory. In a residential area, you could say that's not reasonable. It changes the character of the zoning of that. And you would hope that. The D, that's what the DRB's job is to. Interpret the hard and fast rules. With a little bit of squishiness. So I think that. Reasonable is a word that's, it's probably in here 30 times.
Quite a few.
Intentional. As is in the state regulations to provide for. I don't know how we ever get around that. I don't think we do. I think that the state has given the DRB. That. Leeway. To interpret the zoning regulations in a way that will be consistent and fair. And keep the complexion of the town the way it should be.
I don't think we want to lose that. Ability to use.
Right. And you would just hope that the select board appoints and trusts the reasonable people on the DRB. So if someone came and said. Hey, my neighbor has a camper. And it's sticking about six inches in front of the front plane of their house. Someone could say, that's not really changing the character of your neighborhood. In fact, your neighbor on the other side has a fishing boat that sticks six feet forward. You know, you hope that people. Would be mature and care about the community and make the decisions. And I think. Most of the time they do.
So what are we doing here, folks? Are we going to table it to the next meeting and have all three of you, or four of you, or five of you? Work on changes?
I think it should be, and I think we should. Really read it. I've got to admit, I haven't got through the whole thing. I've tried.
It's a lot to read.
There's a lot there.
There's a lot. I read it three times. I don't know how I missed this. This is really important about the camper.
I'm, I'm going to make a motion that we, we table it to the next meeting with all of us working on it. Could be discussed at the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Any comments, Dick?
No, I read it several times myself, but I haven't totally missed the thing with the RV.
Okay, all right. Maybe there's something else that we all missed too on it.
I thought that just pertained to people that were trying to live in an RV.
Request that a copy be made available to the press.
Sure, that, that can be done.
I mean, if, if you guys can get me your changes, page numbers, wording, whatever, if it's handwritten, you know, whatever, so I can. You know, make the notations on one copy for everyone to have. I can send it to Roy. Okay, or you can come by and pick it up.
Don't expect it tomorrow, though.
No, it'll be closer to the next meeting.
All those in favor of tabling it to the next meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
It's 143 pages.
Okay. They passed, five to, five to nine.
Yep.
If it won't be ready, closer to the next meeting. May I have a copy of what you have now? So I can at least read some of it?
Sure.
Sure. Yeah, it's also on the website, but I can, if you want a printed copy, I can print one for you. You can pick it up tomorrow.
Um, somewhere along the line, I needed to do this. Make a motion to authorize Mike to sign the South Street sidewalk agreement, the final design.
I thought you did that at the beginning.
I thought we already did that, Rob.
Did we do that already?
Yeah, just give it to me. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry.
No, you're good. It's a lot of paper.
I didn't check it off, so I didn't. All right.
And we had to table.
Thank you, guys.
We had to table the tax rate discussion, right?
We were gonna, yeah. Do we need to make that official or was that just for?
I think we decided.
We already made that official, bud.
Okay, all right. So we're tabling the tax rate discussion until the next meeting? All right.
You want me to do them?
Absolutely, absolutely. I think I got them right. Do you have them in your packet, Rob? Those are the three that I found.
Oh, yeah. Let me just make sure that they're right.
There should be originals in the red folder, bud.
Yeah, I think I just handed those to Rob.
Ready?
I guess so.
I would make a motion to approve purchase order 052125. To A1 Sewer and Drain. To clean the storm drains. At the main CVS in Crystal Beach for the sum of $3,000.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I would make a motion to approve purchase order 052053. To the Royal Group. To install seven security cameras at the Castleton Village School. For the sum of $2,332.20.
I'll second.
Can you include in your motion, that part there where it says 50% paid for by VLCT?
I will. You want me just to redo the whole thing?
Just, just include that part there.
And I will, that's to include that there was 50%. Of the total cost was paid for. By VLCT passive grant, leaving the town match at $2,332.20.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I don't have that number.
You got that purchase order?
Okay, aye.
I will make a motion to approve purchase order 052052. To the Royal Group. To install three security cameras at the sewer plant. Um, 50% of that was paid for by the VLCT passive grant. How's that one working out if the town match is only $1,902.25? Why is the total for?
Because that's 50% of the total, right? I don't know why the other one was different.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense.
Yeah, something, something's not kosher there, Rob.
The school with seven cameras. Was less than three.
Well, even so, even so. The town match on this first one was 233220.
Which is the total amount.
Which is the total amount for the bill. The town match on this one was 190225, but the total amount is 3804.
It's half of the total amount.
Mm-hmm.
It wasn't on the other one, so I don't know.
See, I wasn't as dumb as I looked.
What's up there?
I never said that, come on. So I don't know what we're going to do now, guys. Uh.
Do they have to be done today?
What do, what do you think, Dick?
I would suggest that we approve the purchase order for, for the total of the 380451 with the town match being. 1,902.25. What we don't know is how the money's going to move around. We may have to pay the total bill. And then the uh, get reimbursed by uh, VLCT. That would be my guess, which makes me suspect that the previous purchase order we already approved may or may not be correct. But that would be my suspicion, that we have to pay the whole bill and then get reimbursed.
Okay, let's, let's do the one that we're on now. Let's uh. We had the second, did we get a second on it? Did you make a motion on it, Rob, already?
I didn't finish it because I got confused.
No, go ahead and finish it and then we'll get a second.
Yeah, the one for the school, the bill was $4,664.41, so we're getting billed for just half of it. I don't think I have a copy of the purchase order for the sewer plant cameras.
I don't know where you got that $4,000.
It's on page two. Page two of the.
Okay, it's down there in the little tiny, tiny writing, okay.
Yep.
It's, it's poorly written. But I can understand it now.
So somebody made a mistake on one of them.
No, we don't know that. We may have only gotten billed for half of the other one.
Well, the total on the other one was 380451. And that's what the purchase order is for. The total on the quote for the Royal Group on the other one was 466441. And the purchase order is for 233220.
And we approved, we approved to pay that purchase order for 233220.
Which was half of the quote.
If they need to, to add a new purchase order for the total amount, they'll have to provide that to us.
So on the Royal Bill.
Which one?
For the uh. Three security cameras at the sewer plant. It says the total is $3,804.51. And then 50% paid for by VLCT. Town match $1,902.25, so. I would think that we should amend that purchase order.
The first one that we approved already?
Second one.
The second one. The one that we approved at the Village School. Is billed correctly. You know, the invoice was for $4,664.41. And our share is 2332. On the sewer plant. The total bill is $3,804.51. And it also says 50% paid for by VLCT, same grant. Passive grant, town match $1,902.25.
Which is half.
Which is half, so that's. What I think we should approve.
I would agree with Mark and then if it's, if it's not right, then we're going to have to come back next time with two new purchase orders with the full price on there and do that.
If it's not enough, they'll let us know. If we overpay, we may never hear.
That's what I was going to say.
I'm out not to exceed.
Right, I'm out not to exceed.
So I'll redo my purchase order for this last one here. We will make a motion to approve purchase order number 052052. To the Royal Group to install three security cameras at the sewer plant. 50% paid for by VLCT passive grant, the town match of $1,902.25. So the total on that purchase order is not to exceed $1,902.25.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So Bobby, you're going to want to cross that L. And put that.
What am I crossing out, Rob?
You're going to cross this 380451 L.
Okay.
And you're going to change it to the 1,902.25.
Okay.
Before you sign it, or before Dick signs it.
Is that okay, Dick, with us crossing that 3804?
Well, we got to be consistent, so we're being consistent, so. I would go ahead and cross out the 38, the, the. I would cross out the 380451 initial it with, you know, with your uh. RVS and then uh. There's a little actual line here for, for the, the select board to approve it. So just put SB approval date and your initials on all three documents.
Okay.
You're going to jail, haha.
You're coming with me, honey, trust me.
Typically, there's a line on there that says SB approval and then a, and then a line, and I just initial it and date it.
Oh, yep.
Jim and Joe used to do it before me.
RVS. And date it, you said? Okay.
Yes.
I initial, I dated it. Is that sufficient?
Yes.
Okay. Wow. I got to do those other ones too.
Thank you, Karen, for coming.
Oh, my God.
So I already put the date in, but you can put your initials.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Wow. Okay. Are we ready to proceed, guys?
Yes.
Oh, you got to do, you got, we got more to do. We're not moving on. We got to do the.
Warrants.
Warrants for approval. You want to do them, Mrs. Sarris?
I make a motion that we approve warrant. 0708R in the amount of $700. Warrant number 0628. In the amount of $7,102.20. Warrant number 0705. In the amount of $27,411.70. And warrant 0708. In the amount of $139,953.21. And warrant 0627P. In the amount of $21,802.72. And warrant 0703P. In the amount of $21,290.13.
I got a second on the?
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, for me too. Okay. Moving on here, guys. Select board comments and or concerns? Rob?
Um, yeah, I just have one thing. I don't know, Mark probably saw the same thing on. Facebook about some thefts down in the Crystal Beach Common Area. There's been some gas tanks being stolen off boats and just some other stuff stolen on boats. I don't know if maybe we can get. The police department just to swing in through there every now and again, just to kind of make a presence known down there. I don't know if it'll help or not, but. It's as simple as opening the gate, pulling to the end and pulling back out.
When is Mike back?
Um, April 15.
Okay.
So I can talk to him tomorrow and see if we can.
Yeah, would you do that first? Yeah, just follow up on that, Karen. I appreciate that. What else you got, Rob?
That's pretty much it for now.
Mary Lee?
Well, you said to put the logos there. I don't know, I just, I just, I still question that. Okay, I'm from Granville. And I'm delivering something to you. Why do, how can you make me have a logo?
Well, they're working for somebody. They're working for Amazon or whatever.
No, they could be working for themselves. They could be delivering anything.
Like the Instacart people.
Mm-hmm.
Like what?
Like an Instacart person.
Or DoorDash or something like that.
Sure.
I don't know. I'm asking. I'm not arguing. I'm asking.
Um, I know there are communities that have enacted ordinances like that because it can be unsettling. Um. To use you for an example. Uh, you live alone, so. Right at dusk, a car pulls up to your house and a man gets out of it.
Come on in.
You're in camera. Behave yourself.
I, I think that in this day and age where so much is being delivered to the home, this can be unsettling. And that people that are engaged in commerce should have their vehicles identified, just like Tyler Technologies. You know, they're going to all be identified. I have a friend that uh. Is in charge of construction for Consolidated and he faced Consolidated Communications. And he faces this in a lot of communities. They hire subcontractors to come in and do fiber optic work. And a lot of communities say all those subcontractors need to have consolidated logos or a sign that says. Who they are and who they represent on the side of the truck, with the phone number. So people know, who is this in my neighborhood? My wife had a friend in Wallingford. Woman came home the other day and there was a man, a Toyota parked in her driveway and a man standing on her porch taking a picture of her house. And she freaked out, turned around, went to the town office.
I would too.
It was. It was an Amazon subcontractor and after they put the package on your porch, they take a picture to prove it was delivered. But the vehicle was not identified.
There's a lot of unmarked vans. There's a lot of unmarked vans. Even some of them are rental.
A lot of them now say Hertz or something, and they should clearly say Amazon and have a phone number, so people know who is in your neighborhood. You know, if a rental truck pulled up to my neighbor's house tonight and started taking their furniture out, I would have no idea if they were a delivery service or a thief. And we're living in a different time period than we were 20 years ago.
I think that would be an undelivery service.
Well, not if they're bringing a mattress and they're taking out a mattress, right?
You don't know? I don't think it's a lot to ask.
I had that experience.
I'll look for some samples that other towns have adopted and provide a few for the next meeting for you guys to review.
Yeah.
I think it's worth looking into.
Yeah, nobody's intimidated when they see a UPS truck. You know who it is.
Well, I can understand that because quite often someone will come knock on my door looking for Bill. Billy doesn't live there. He lives in Polton Lake and whatnot, so I understand it a little bit more.
Mary Lee, you need to put a sign out, Bill does not live here, and that'll take care of that. Right there next to your door.
Please try to say, oh, God.
I had that experience. I had a car, I don't know, SUV, whip in my dooryard, pull right up to the front of my wife's vehicle. She, I don't know where she was. I was mowing the lawn, like, I looked over, what the hell is she doing? She jumped out of the car, opened up the trunk, like, what is going on here? I saw after she got out, she had one of those blue Amazon vests on. I said, oh, she's a delivery person, but she had nothing on the side of her car. There was nobody I knew either, and she had somebody riding with her, too, a man riding with her.
I agree with you now.
Even have postal carriers.
It didn't seem that.
It's unsettling.
They use their own vehicle.
They use their own vehicle, and some are marked, some are not. The, I don't get rural delivery, but the person that goes by my house is in an old Chevy pickup with New York State plates. And a big bearded guy. He's probably the nicest guy in the world, but...
Could be intimidating.
I think it is. I'm just trying to put myself in the position of women that are alone, and I don't think should be subjected to that.
So we're agreed that Karen's going to find some stuff for us to work with, and we'll start with that?
I think so, Dick. Yeah, that sounds good. A little more...
All right, then. We'll do that.
Okay. Is that it for you, Mary Lee?
That is, that's it for me. I'm not afraid of anything, not even you.
He's a mean-looking devil.
Mr. Brown? What did you have?
You know, the only concern I had, I discussed this earlier, we had, I'm probably not going to be politically correct in this discussion. We had some vagrants hanging out in our community, breaking into vehicles, stealing credit cards. One of them is now in jail. If you Google his name, he's got a long history of it. I think this is something we're going to see more of in our community, and I want to make sure that we're taking the absolute most aggressive path that our police department can take in dealing with this. It's not kids throwing water balloons. They're dangerous people, and we need to make sure that Castleton is not a welcoming community for them. People want to come to this community and work. We'll all help them find jobs and welcome them in, but when people come here because they want to vandalize and steal, we need to take a really, really aggressive stance on this. It's my understanding there were people from out of state that were parked at the rail trail that had their cars vandalized. They're not coming back here next year for vacation. It wasn't a good experience for them.
Right.
Vandalized by stealing or just plain scratching it up or whatever, or they...
They took backpacks out of cars.
Oh, okay.
And within an hour identified the woman carrying the backpack.
Was that the people we were talking about?
Yeah. And they were given a citation to appear in court at a later date.
I don't disagree with you, Mark, but it's a bigger issue than what we can handle. I hear report after report after report. Police officers enrolled still found out the paperwork, and that person is back here in town and literally doing the same exact thing that he just got picked up for two hours ago. We just, our judicial system is a joke in the state of Vermont.
It is, but if we continue to truck them into jail and make this a difficult place for them to hang out, I think it's the most we can do.
I think you're right.
Somebody needs to do more on the state level, though, is what I'm saying. You know, I just, it's disgusting. It's just unacceptable in my book, so...
So at the next meeting, Pete usually gives his update, so would you like me to give him a heads up if that is something that you guys would like to discuss?
I would absolutely like to approach that subject with him.
It's true.
I would agree with you, Mark. I think we should have that discussion with Pete and then figure out what next steps are after that.
Yep. Our department has a very robust police budget, and I think the town feels good about it because we want that kind of security.
This is actually kind of scary.
And it's actually a reasonable expectation to park your car and not have it vandalized.
Correct.
And that was during the daylight, I assume, too?
It was during the daylight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's the best time to do it because nobody pays any attention. At night, they would say, there were the flashlights.
Yeah, they were just walking around checking every car to see if it was locked at noon time.
Many, many, many years ago, all of a sudden, our dog started barking like mad, and it was the middle of the night. So Bob gets up and turns the outside light on, lets the dog out, and this guy goes like heck. And Bob was working on his tractor, so the hood of it was, and that guy went ass over teakettle over that. I don't think he was walking too well. He had to have hit both shins.
I've got one more thing, too. Don't we have to sign the warrants?
Yep. I need to hand those around to you, don't I?
Yep.
I told you to stay on top of me. Sorry, guys. Maybe I do this a couple more times, I'll have my act together here.
The only thing I can say, Dick, he's closer to the right time.
Oh.
Let me think about some more things here before we get...
I'm going to move on to the next subject. I just hand these to you, and you can figure them out, Mary Lee. My God.
I've never been...
Well, I'm sitting here in my truck watching the sunset over Lake Ontario, and I would really like to be somewhere other than here.
Well, it sounds like a better place than us sitting inside this room, Dick. At least you're seeing the sunset. As long as you guys are signing it, is a brief recap and items for follow-up? Is there anything, guys?
Well, Karen's got a couple action items, but she knows what they are.
We all had to take a look at the UDR again, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
What did you have?
The to-talk to Pete, to check into the identification of delivery vehicles, straight ordinances.
Okay.
Maybe some samples of that. There was something about, oh, the Common Area. Have Pete go in and check.
Okay, so it sounds like it's all three of them involved. Okay, okay. Do you have anything, Dick? Do you want to follow up on?
No, no, sorry.
Okay. Action items? I don't know what that...
I just did that, I think, action.
Okay. Do we have a reason for executive sessions?
I do not.
Nor do I.
Brown, you got, no?
I have no need for executive session.
Okay.
Action items. Make them so we adjourn.
Well, we can't do that until we sign these warrants.
They're all signed, all and not you.
I didn't sign them. Good night, Roy.
Good night, Roy.
Hold your horses. You can do it. Am I on time?
Yes, you are.
My God, Rob.
Early.
Are you proud of me now? Dick may lose his job from here on out, right? No, that's not going to happen.
You've learned your lesson, didn't you?
Yeah, yeah, thank God you guys are here to keep me straight in several things. Thank God for Karen. She had all those things set off to the side, the notes on them.
Thank you, Karen.
Well, yeah. It is what it is, right?
It is what it is.
Exactly the fact.
Good, I was here.
Nope, nope, you don't get them yet. I got to sign them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I signed your name.
Did you? You can get them.
All right.
Karen, are you going to leave these so Dick can sign them, too?
Yeah, Dick's getting everything.
Okay. Did you hear that, Dick?
He's looking at the sunset.
He fell asleep on us?
He's had enough. He's done. He's done.
Well, I'm sorry. I was daydreaming.
She's going to put these in your box, too, so you're going to be, make sure you don't get hand cramped there.
All right.
Mary Lee, you want to make your motion now?
I make a motion that we adjourn at 9:20.
I'll second that.
All those in favor are adjourning at 9:20?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.